This is Zoom and it's a virtual meeting. But with so many people on, it does cause feedback. And so if everybody has their microphones feeding right now, we'll get all kinds of feedback and confusion and some of the issues that would happen when we were doing the test run last night. That means if you're not speaking, if you could please mute yourself. Chloe from the moderator will mute everybody else as she can. So that it will hopefully run and sound as smooth as possible. So again, if you are not speaking as a council member or guest speaker, please have your microphone on mute until you speak. And then when you do speak, make sure you turn it back on again. Because otherwise we'll just see your lips move. So and then so far we had an option. We were concerned about whether or not we could even do that. But we tried really hard and now we have a streaming version. So there are members of the public that can come and view this live. But they will be because of the mute issues and what we're dealing with right now. They won't be able to partake in the meeting, but that would be standard anyway unless it was public comments. Today, public comments will be read into the into record. So and moving forward, the more we get this down, the better we can adapt to it and the more things we'll be able to do. Okay, if you're following along with the agenda. The first item is called to order, so I called the meeting to order as of right now at 7:05. And item 11, introduction by me. I would just like to say I want to welcome everybody for coming and thank you for including yourself in this difficult process. We hope our first attempt is smooth. I want to thank the library big time for making this happen. Their technical ability was able to get this above and beyond what we'd initially started. So I'd a huge big thank you to them. I'd like to thank the guest speakers coming and joining us and attempting this for the first time. And I'd like to thank those that wish that those who have come to listen in and watch and appreciate your patience with us trying to make this happen. This is a strange and difficult time. But it's important for us to let the community know that the town council still has a purpose, is still here. We want to make sure that we can be reached and listened to and be voices for community where and when we can. So hopefully this being our first virtual forum will allow that initiation of this new process to take place. And thank you all and look forward to a good meeting. And I'm going to go on to item 1.2, roll call to council member Jones. And council member Jones is on mute right now. There we go.
Okay, I just unmuted myself. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's safe and healthy. When I call your name, please respond. Okuri Izimi? Pat Sutherland?
Here.
Jennifer Lee?
Here.
Jennifer, I saw her. Oh, there is Dorothy Wong?
Here.
Jeff Simmons?
Disaffected.
Disaffected?
He's here.
Okay, Victoria Knapp?
Present.
Billy Malone?
Present.
Aaron Cheetah?
Present.
Dr. Sandra Thomas? I saw Sandra. She's there. Gloria Sanika? No Gloria? No Gloria. Okay, Antonio Borsara?
Present.
Nick Santangelo?
Present.
Reginald Wilkins? Is Reggie on the phone? I can't hear you.
He is not currently on the call.
I did send him the information to get on the way he asked and I have not heard from him. So and also too, I don't think you heard at the time. Corey Izimi is here. I don't think. I think he may have been on mute.
I see. I can see.
Yes, I am here, Chairman.
I saw him. Okay, Sylvia Vega?
Here.
Diane Marcusson?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum with 13.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council member Sutherland. Item 1.3, approval of the meeting agenda.
The executive committee met on April 14th last Tuesday and approved the agenda as presented. The only change that I have just at the moment really is just a change in presenter. Officer Cooper will not be here. I do have his presentation though. That's it.
Do you also have the presentation from Maria Grayken?
No.
LA Fire?
I don't. I don't. I mean, we received the information, but I don't have her presentation.
Okay.
I think Veronica was talking with her. I think. Are there any other changes that need to be made to the agenda? I don't see anything. Okay, so in that case, I move to accept the agenda as presented with the amendment of the presenter.
Do we have a second? Second.
Councilmember Izimi, second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. No abstentions? So moved. It's going to be hard to hear that right now. I just realized something in counting up the votes or hands. So what we can do is go to a process of elimination, meaning we didn't hear any abstentions. We didn't hear any no votes, which meant that can be counted as unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to officers' report. I don't have much, much more to say. This would be item 2.1, the chairman's report. I think I've already said it. This is a strange and scary time. I, we encourage as a council to make sure everybody follows the stay at home ordinance. We don't encourage anyone to leave, to remain at home as much as possible. Unless it's a case of an emergency or for special needs. We wish to support and follow all protocols from LA County and for the state of California and for our own community of Altadena. And we want to make sure that we support each other during this. So if you find that someone is in need at this particular time, let's make sure that we can share our information, share council members' information and find a way that we can actually be there for the communities and support them in every way we possibly can. Our information is on the website. So if you do find someone who wants to get ahold of us, you can get ahold of us that way with our emails and our phone numbers. And anyway, that's it for now. I'd like to move on to item 2.2 to vice chair, council member Sutherland.
This is going to be really brief tonight because usually I talk about how we make public comment and there will not be any, any public comment from the assembled folks. But I do have two public comments that at the appropriate time I will read into the record.
Okay, and I just wanted to add to that, that we are, we have accepted public comments for this meeting. But because this has been a trial process and we didn't know how it was all going to unfold. We offered through social media and other outlets for people to make public comments and email their public comments in. And so everyone has hopefully has seen that and had opportunity. If they wish to make a public comment, send it in that way and they will be read into record at that, at that particular time. Okay, moving on, item 2.1, reporting secretary, council member Jones.
Good evening again. All council members received the minutes of February 18th. I did get one correction that has been made. And with that correction made, I want to make a motion that we accept the minutes as they were presented to all the council members. And they be placed on the website. I'll forward them to Dorothy with the correction. Okay.
So is that a motion? Second? Second, council member Sutherland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay, no? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, so one abstention. So moved. Okay, moving on, treasures report, item 2.4, council member Lee.
Hi. Okay, so our account is in good order, good standing. 2,0262 and 40 cents. That's our account. I can't pass the can around.
Maybe a virtual can at some point. Okay, that's the report?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item 2.5, corresponding secretary, council member one.
Hi. So yes, thank you, Chairman. People are texting me while all this is going on. I just wanted to, as Billy had alluded to, the Altadena Town Council website, there's so much information coming through, thanks to the great county of Los Angeles and various businesses and partners. So if you need to find out what's going on, there's so many ways to find out. On our website, I have created a link called COVID-19 News. And you can click on that link on our website. And from there, it will then take you to the covid19.lacounty.gov, which is the main page for the county of Los Angeles. And all of the information coming through public health, business services, eviction, delivery, all of the things that a lot of us need during this time. So you can go to the county's website for that. Also, as reports come in, I'm posting news as it relates to different things. I'll give you a little highlight and then in collaboration, our, our library will be reporting on it during their report. But we also have posted Altadena Connections, which is also called altadina news.org. And I have that posted as well on that link. Okay? So you guys, when you get a chance, go to the altadinatowncouncil.org website. And you'll be able to find information. You can also sign up if you scroll to the bottom of the homepage. We do have all kinds of information, but you can subscribe. So anytime that we put a post up, you can put your email in and then you'll get the latest news updates from the Altadena Town Council website. Any questions, Town Council? No?
I don't think so.
Okay, one other thing, just Pat, I received a letter and I don't know if you got it from Altadena for Clean Healthy Air. Did you receive that? Is Sutherland?
Yes, as I do, it's public comment and I'll be reading it later.
Wonderful. And then the last thing. So again, read the updates. There's all kinds of stuff, including food and all that sort of stuff. And then after that, we'll talk later. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, item three, which is public safety reports. And we're actually going to start off with, actually, do we have a report from Officer Cooper? You mentioned that, Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, he is not here today because his family is throwing him his birthday party. So that's the reason, that's the reason he's not here. The totals for Highway Patrol are there. For the last month, there were total crashes were 21, hit and runs five, DUI zero, injuries four and property damage only 14. And he, he sent along this statement. He said, here are the collision stats for the month of March. They're down a little compared to normal. We usually run high twenties to low thirties a month as opposed to the 21 that we had this year. As you know, with less people driving, oops, women, I'm expecting that April will be much lower. The stay at home order was not put in place until over halfway through March. As you know, with less people driving, we are seeing less collisions overall. I would encourage everyone who does need to drive to be mindful of their speed. With less traffic, people have a tendency to drive at higher speeds. Also, with people being home more, there are pedestrians out walking, running, riding bicycles and so on. Please drive at safe speeds and watch for people who may be crossing the roadway or for driveway openings. End of statement.
Okay, thank you. I would usually ask at this point if the council members have any questions, but I'm not sure if Councilmember Sutherland would actually have an answer in response from Officer Cooper.
But if there are any, I can pass them on. I'd be happy to pass them on.
Okay, are there any questions from the council members for Officer Cooper?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on and Public Safety Reports 3.2 is the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Jacobs. I'll pass it on to you. Don't forget to unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, good evening, Town Council, and thank you for hosting this meeting on Zoom. It's exciting to see everybody and I'm glad everybody's doing well. You guys look all happy and healthy and jolly. So I'd like to provide some update on crime stats and then what the sheriff's department is doing in efforts to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. Crime stats are looking really, really, really well across the department. They're down part one crimes, which are most serious crimes, rape, murder, robbery, aggravated assaults. They're down 11%. And in Altadena, we're down 13%. So that's really, really good. What we have found is across the board through the department, domestic violence is slightly up by about 8%. And we really attribute that to a lot more people being at home. And family violence, kids are out of school, parents aren't working and tempers are flaring. So on the positive, people are practicing that safer at home, social distancing, things that we ask them to do. But sometimes people get a little carried away. So that is on the rise, but we're monitoring it and we, we take that very serious. We don't have a problem in Altadena, but I just thought I'd mention it across the board. Crime, for the most part, is down in all census tracts with the exception of 4610. And I talked to Veronica Jones earlier this week about that. She had about 16 incidents in Antonio in 4610. Of those incidents, there was four aggravated assaults. One was two juveniles that got into a pretty good fistfight, which turned into a felony assault on each other. So they were both arrested at five acres. We had a gentleman that had a little too much to drink near the All-Star Liquor and hit the store clerk with his cane. So he was arrested. And then we had an incident where two brothers got in an argument and one stabbed the other. And that brother was arrested. And his victim brother was not very cooperative. So that was interesting, to say the least. We also had five burglaries in the 24 hour fitness. I'm not sure why, because we, we shut that gym down with the COVID-19. But nonetheless, they managed to get five burglaries in there with credit cards and money were taken. And then across the board, across the county, we've had a lot of stolen catalytic converters. And surprisingly enough, they're stealing them from older model Toyota Priuses. And those, there's four of those in our, in our town, just popping up all around, nowhere in particular or any given time during the, or day during the week. But they're also taking them from larger trucks for F250, 350s. So that's a problem for the entire county. So that's it on crime. Some COVID-19 updates. I don't think you guys are aware, but I'm working in our department operating center, which we call it a DOC. And pretty much running the entire department and all the resources needed in anything related to this COVID-19 epidemic. We're tracking our quarantine of staff, of inmates, testing positives of staff inmates, anything like that having to do with it. So I'll run down a little bit of a history on what we have going on here. So countywide, we've issued 30 citations for health order violations. And we've made one arrest related to the health order violations and related to COVID-19. So that's, that's pretty good, actually. We're doing, we're really working hard to warn and advise. Most people, you know, if they're, if it's not physical distancing, social distancing, or just being in the wrong place at the wrong time, not adhering to the stay at home orders. They generally get in their cars and leave. So, but to have 30 citations, they must have been, been wanting to stay out there and prove a point. So currently we have 343 staff members that are quarantined on my department. That includes both sworn and professional staff. We have 57 positive COVID staff members that have tested positive so far. We do offer and we have been offering for about three weeks the COVID-19 tests and we, for our staff. And we have done that through home visits. If they're very sick, we'll have somebody that goes out and gives the test to the employee and the employee does the swab, gives it back to the other person and we test them. And then we've also had a drive-through site where people have come if they can, if they're able to drive and they are exhibiting some of the symptoms, they go ahead and get tested. So we're providing that as well. As far as Altadena and across the county, the sheriff's mission has been since the beginning is to provide high visibility patrol, extra patrol efforts in your supermarket areas. You know, your Walmart, your Targets, your grocery outlets, things like that where large lines were forming in the beginning. So we're still out and about and, you know, in our area, we're providing extra patrols in the trailheads and the Eaton Canyon parking lots. And just anywhere we can, what we call critical facilities, some of the schools and closed businesses, we're providing a lot of extra patrol. Hopefully you guys see the difference out there. But they are coming from their assets throughout the whole department. So it could be a narco detective, a narcotics detective with a beard down to his knees, you know, driving a radio car. So don't be alarmed. He's just not going to cut his beard off for this assignment. So and then also we're continuing to join, to work together with these welfare checks of our elderly. And I really want to personally thank several of the, the town council members that have gone out on their own and checked on their, their neighbors, checked on people within their census tracts and even brought them water and toilet paper and wipes and things like that. It's, it really has. We've come a long way as a, as a community and it just shows that we, we, we take care of each other, you know? But I really appreciate that. I know the deputies do as well and they're, they're enjoying the all the treats and things that have been sent to the station. So I couldn't thank you enough for that. We're all getting jolly on this COVID diet, I like to say. It's, it's not working for me, but, but that's really all I have to, to report tonight, if anyone has any questions.
I'll open up the questions. I just have one, one myself is with the Senior Welfare Check, which is a wonderful program. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, that if you do know of somebody in your census tract or a neighbor or even a relative in our community, you're able to contact the sheriff to show us we'll send somebody out, or dispatch somebody to that, to that home to check on that person and make sure they're okay, make sure they have their needs. They'll do just a complete welfare check for communication for that. Should somebody know if somebody or somebody has concerns, then it's move for a few days. Who do they call? Do they call the main office at the sheriff's station? I'm going to assume there's no one manning the desk at the front right now due to this stay at home orders.
Oh.
Well, there's somebody there.
We have people at the station. Our lobby's open.
Okay. So how would somebody reach you?
Just call the main number for the station.
The number for the station?
Yes.
Okay. Is any, any more questions from the council? Okay.
Yeah, I had a question.
It's good to see you. I know that we had Alex retire since our last meeting. And Deputy Page is gone. Is there a replacement person for Deputy Page that you're ready to announce or not yet?
Yes, as a matter of fact, thank you for bringing that up. So Lieutenant Alex Kentschow, his last day is the 29th of April. But he's taken a couple of weeks off and he will truly be missed. I don't have a replacement for him as of now. I should have one, I'm hoping with the next few months. In the meantime, it'll be Lieutenant Bruce Cantley. I think you, you guys have met him. He's our detective lieutenant, so he'll be filling in, doing both jobs for a little bit. And then we do have a new search and rescue community relations deputy. Her name is Zuma Duarte. She was, you probably saw her out on day shift patrol. She was very instrumental in getting together the Christmas packages for the, the family who lost their mom. Who had the two little kids, the boy and the girl. And you guys all helped out. So she was extremely moved by that. And he's hit the ground running and she's going to be an amazing addition.
Councilmember Cheetah?
Hi, just a quick question for you, Captain Jacobs. I was curious what the citations for violations of the health order are. Is that when someone's not wearing a mask in public? Or when they're in a closed off area such as a Parker Trail? Is it all of those things? Or is it something else?
You know, I have to imagine, yeah, I have to imagine it's more like public gathering where they refuse to disperse because it's not, I mean, like I said, we do a lot of warning and advising. I don't know what they all are. We have not cited anybody in our town, but I just know that that's the number that the sheriff is reporting. But a majority of the folks just do as we ask and, but it hasn't got down to that. But you know, everybody seems to be wearing the masks, you know, for the most part. And I've ever even heard on my, when I'm not working, people telling people to put their masks on. So you guys are policing each other.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Captain Jacobs. I want to really also really appreciate you taking the time. I know how difficult it must be for you and your entire department right now and for you to take the time and joining us in this meeting. We really, really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. It's good to see you guys.
And thank you for all you're doing.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Altadena Fire, which would be Maria Grayken. I don't, she's not here this evening. We, all council members did get a report. I don't know if you have any questions with that. I'm looking at it right now. The only thing I can, I will state, because I won't be able to read it the same way she has. But it is the total number of responses from the fire department was 362. This was for month, month of March. Seven were fires. 304 were medical. 14 were service, two hazmat, seven hazardous conditions and 28 good intent. So the big standout on that one is 304 medical. So I can't answer any questions of what that is, but I would have to assume that is this particular crisis influenced. And maybe next time we can, if she's able to make it, we can ask that question. But does anybody have any statements or questions that maybe we can discuss regarding that report? Now, okay, moving on, safety, staying with public safety report, item 3.4, sir, with Deb Habister. Hi. Don't forget to unmute Deb. We can't hear you. Still no sound. We have no sound, Deb, sorry. Okay. Does your computer have a microphone? I think it's an all in one.
I think it's an all-in-one, earphone and microphone.
Yeah. No volume.
Plugged in?
Oh.
Replacement librarian. Let me see.
If you're asking the library as the moderator, you are unmuted. So it looks like it's a problem on your end with the microphone.
I think she's saying move on and come back to her.
I have the cert report. If you would like me to read it in Deb, it's up to you. You can nod. No.
There's the chat feature, perhaps.
Okay, just be aware of everybody too on the chat feature. If you do use that chat feature. That is recorded as part of this whole meeting. So just be aware, anything you write on that chat will go into record. In case you decide to send emojis and stuff to each other through the chat, just be aware that it's going to be on record as well. Deb is also trying to say something right now.
I think she just said move on.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to nod, Deb. Do you mind if I read the report for cert? Don't read it? Yes, read it? Okay. All right. So this was the report that Deb was going to give from sir. We are hoping that Altadena now knows the challenges of isolating at home and being prepared with enough water, savings, food, toiletries, and cash for up to three months or more in the event of any disaster, including pandemics, earthquakes, wildfires, high winds, and floods. Please send anyone my way that might like to partake in cert or Altadena map your neighborhood. FYI, map your neighborhood will be holding a virtual Zoom training Sunday, May the seventeenth from four PM to six PM. Please contact Amin's email at mynrsvp2@gmail.com. If you wish to learn more, how to become a trainer for your neighborhood. The past quarters of the cert meeting summaries are. January the eighth, our meeting talked about the new updated cert materials from FEMA. By the end of January, our Facebook pages began posting about the coronavirus in Wuhan, China. February the twelfth, we talked about the coronavirus. In March the eleventh, we talked about the coronavirus virus and wild wild wildfires. And April the eighth, we had a Zoom conference of about fifteen people, including couples, talking about how to live with self-isolation rules. Three hundred plus former attendees were notified via email. There were no public notifications to avoid trolling of our Zoom meeting. Anyway, so that was the, the the cert notes that Deb was going to read, correct Deb? Okay. The, the next thing that Deb was going to bring up too is me and Deb has had several conversations with Red Cross regarding, I'm sure many of you have had the same question. I know some of the council members have brought it up regarding doing blood drives within our community. And that was the next part that Deb was going to bring up. So I'm going to bring that up right now is I've had some communications with Deb and we've been talking, me and Deb have been talking through with Red Cross regarding how a community would hold a blood drive during this crisis. The things to note about that is, one, all blood drives right now with Red Cross, and I'm assuming other organizations, are no longer doing blood drives within the community. The mobile bus, because of social distancing and the COVID crisis, is not available. And so we can't set up in any areas or parks or playgrounds or anything like that because they are not doing mobile blood drives. The other option for a community would be a real blood drive, but that would need a place like a big gym or a school or somewhere that has a big indoor space that could accommodate social distancing. In that particular case, that is still a minimum of three months out, even if that was an option. Currently, what we can do is we can do a community, what they call a virtual blood drive, which is what me and Deb was talking about maybe setting up. It's called a sleeves-up campaign by Red Cross. And what that means is the only way to do a blood donations right now is by actually making an appointment and going down and doing it at one of their centers. What we were looking at doing is setting up a blood drive campaign through Red Cross and it will go virtual. It will be a sleeves-up. We can offer it to all the, our community or any other community groups that want to partner and join us. We have a goal of how many we'd like to sign up, say twenty-five or something like that. But it's up to each person that would like to partake to make their appointment and go down. Just be aware that appointments right now are two, two to three weeks out. And that COVID restrictions are in place, meaning there might be there'll be a distance, social distancing and things like that. So that is something to be aware and we'd like to maybe start that blood drive right there. And we're going to be working with Red Cross with that. And but it's going to take a few days for us to set up. So I'm going to be working with Deb with that. And I'd like any members here that are considering, if you can, to donate and become part of that drive. And then again, we're going to offer it to the community. So we're going to start probably with a maybe twenty-five people or something like that. And hopefully we can, for the whole community, and maybe we can beat that. But that's the only way anyone can do a blood drive right now. It's a virtual blood drive. And that's, any more questions, let us know.
I believe Deb's audio is now working in case you have any questions for her.
Would you like to add anything, Deb?
You think I'm working now? Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thanks, Billy, for giving my entire report. No, I don't have anything to add other than to say hi to Captain Jacobs, because I haven't seen her in a month. I miss the station. That's it.
And I want to say thank you to Deb. And the first part of that report, as you were stating that Deb and Sir comes to our meeting on a regular basis stating to all of us how important it is in the time of crisis to be prepared. And I'm sure at the beginning of this, many of us weren't prepared, which caused the lines at the grocery stores and everything else. So I think we need to listen more to Deb in the future and make sure that we're more prepared.
This is my, this is my halo, my preparedness halo.
And, and to encourage everybody to support Sir and in that what was the date you have up and coming certifications, was it? Where are we?
Oh, well. I think, I think the most important thing is map your neighborhood on the seventeenth, and we're going to do that via Zoom like this. And in terms of cert trainings, we put them all off because I had to cancel everything at the Altadena Community Center. I mean, we just don't know. If we're all back up in places larger, you know, people larger than, groups larger than ten people, we'll start to consider it again.
But map your neighborhood is, is the one we should be focusing on right now, correct?
Right. And that's Sunday, May seventeenth. It'll be a Zoom meeting. If you want to contact me, halfcity@earthlink.net or mynrsvp@gmail.com, which is the Altadena map your neighborhood. Go ahead and we'll get you into that Zoom meeting. It's going to be very similar to the ones we have in person. And handouts will be sent prior to the meeting. So you all have them.
And council member one, can we put that on our website for that date? Awesome. All right. So that will also be posted as well.
Thank you all for being so patient. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you. Any questions for Deb? From the council? Okay, moving on, we're going to move on to the Altadena community reports. First up is four point one, Doug Cauliflow, with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, counsel. Everybody hear me okay? Okay. Chamber, I don't have a lot to report as far as recent activities or activities right around the corner as you might expect. We have been, however, we have been very, very busy doing the best we can to communicate within the community and supporting our local business and our, our members. As we all know, there's a tremendous amount of information out there and it comes fast and furious. And we are doing our best to share what we think is appropriate without excessive duplication, if you will. I want to give a public gratitude to Veronica. She is going above and beyond and and we're getting stuff out almost on a daily basis. So from a activity standpoint, we're probably much busier than normal. But again, no real, real activities to, to, to share with you. I will, just backing up a little bit, our last big event was our installation dinner on January thirty-one. Very successful event. I think I gave some tentative numbers a meeting or two ago. But we did raise about forty-six hundred dollars for our Marion Wolschager Scholarship Fund. And we will be distributing for one thousand dollar scholarships to some deserving youth here very, very shortly. So I am pleased to announce that. Thank you. And that's really about it that comes to mind. Unless anybody has any questions or comments, that's all that I, I have to share right now. Dorothy?
Hi. Yes, so I know that some businesses are open, some are closed. Some are doing deliveries.
Well, yes, and we did, I would assume most of you saw the publication that Neighbor's Building Better Altadena put out last week. And I reached out to them and they graciously allowed us to share that, which went out, I believe, this morning to our membership database and our members. And so we're, yes, Dorothy, I mean, we're doing our best to get that information out. Daniel's been very helpful with, with Facebook and in updating what's going on, not only with just our members, but the local business community. So we're doing the best we can. I'm sure some stuff slips through the cracks here and there, but we are when we know about something, we are updating mostly social media. That seems to be the most effective means.
I, I do know that this particular time in Altadena, that's one of the things that's really important. We keep talking about small business and survival of small business. And of all communities, we are nothing but small businesses. We don't really have any large commercial areas that a lot of towns have. We are nothing but small businesses. So it's really important that we are there for each other for small business. And some of the things I've seen the chamber doing already, and I think it's really important right now, is that we have that unison and support for each other and that we support the businesses where we can and the support businesses support other businesses where they can. And I noticed that the chamber has had, especially on their social media, they've been posting business after business after business about what they're doing, when they're open, their hours and so forth and so on, and opening up discussions. So I've seen that going around town like crazy. So that I want to say thank you.
Well, and again, thank you, but kudos to Daniel. Daniel is doing a lion's share of that. We appreciate his efforts there, so. But thank you, Billy. And, and anybody that's got any suggestions, we are very wide open to that. Again, I'm trying not to duplicate. I know we're all getting tons of duplicates in our inboxes and I'm trying not to add to that. So any constructive criticism or suggestions is, is more than welcome.
Well, the other thing is that, you know, I mean, obviously there's things like the small business loans and all these things that are available. And the CARES Act and the things that county's been doing. So I'm assuming a lot of that stuff is on the chamber website or Facebook page and we can follow links to that. I know it's doubling up, but you know, the, there's been a lot of talk around town, I mean, between residents and small businesses themselves regarding making rents while they're closed or open with small business and evictions and everything else. For the LA, just, just because that is a hot topic right now and the fear of losing businesses and the fear of losing locations and and evictions and everything else, LA County did put a modatorium in place till the end of April, end of May. So if any tenant or commercial, it is, includes commercial, which would be your small business locations, that it is against the law to summon any evictions or anything else during that time. So if you have a small business out there or you have and it's a commercial business, as if not just your tenancy, that please contact LA County. I have a number here. If you experience a landlord tenant issue, please contact the LA County Disaster Help Center. And the phone number for that is eight three three two three eight four four five zero. Or the email is rent@dcba.lacounty.gov. Just know that.
Billy Jeffson, it's one comment though. Please don't, folks, don't take that as, as a free ticket not to pay your rent because you will be liable for it eventually.
Yeah.
No, and that's, that's a very good point, Jeff. I mean, it does, it does help, but it's only a short-term fix and you do have to pay the market down the road. So that's very, very true.
But it's just currently in these neck
Just, just to note to be responsible.
Yeah. But it's not there for people to play games with. It's there in case of an emergency to support those, just to bridge a gap. Not, not to solve a problem.
No, it's Victoria. Were you made aware of the eviction notice served on the tenant in my, the commercial tenant in my census tract yesterday?
I, I, if we're talking about the same one, I, I just heard about it earlier. I didn't. I, I heard the rumblings a couple of weeks ago and was active in some communication and I hadn't heard anything for a couple of weeks. So I
And Billy, you, you're aware? Did you have any conversations with county, Billy, yourself?
I, I did write emails into county.
Okay.
And I asked if they already have communications. I heard the eviction notice came out yesterday and I did contact them because in this particular case, from the information I'm given, that actually is illegal in this current climate. So I, I did contact, I haven't heard back from the person, the county that I contacted. But I did want to make sure I shared that with anyone going through this situation. So that's the information that, you know, that there's a place to go to because it's not just a question of if or can or what. It's illegal. You know, it's just illegal right now.
And then I also just wanted to take a minute to thank all of our small businesses who are not only feeding us during this time of unprecedented epidemic, but those that have stepped forward, who can, that are taking the initiative to feed our first responders. So on that note, and I let Captain Jacobs know about this, I also let Maria Grayken know again that Alta Eats is serving a roastie on Thursday night for free to healthcare workers and first responders. So it's not available to the public at all. It's only available to them. So, and I looked at the menu today. I don't know, Jory, if you saw the menu, but it's like a London broil. It's a good, it's a good meal. So and I know that there's been others from grocery outlet and other establishments that are doing what they can. In addition to just, you know, our, our residents stepping up and making masks and making those available for free. And I see people that are doing swaps of toilet paper for paper towels or whatever. So it's been very heartening to see.
Also, I'd note that you know, Dorothy mentioned it last week, they made a delivery from Altadena Farmers Markets to to Station Twelve, and I believe that, that tomorrow they will make a, a delivery to Station Eleven. LA County Fire. So, you know, there's, there's just a lot of, a lot of support going around and it's, it's well-served.
Yes. And to, to add on to that, thank you, Jeff. We did make a delivery to everybody last week, Station Eleven, Twelve, and the sheriffs. And then the fire station, Twelve, ended up helping us rescue a fledgling owl. That's my fun story. It was actually at Loma Alta Park and I had called the wildlife rescue and they said, you know, it's getting dark and if it's moving towards the bushes, it's probably not a good place because it can't fly vertically. So you have to get it up to a branch. So anyway, so it was kind of fun. So anyway, so it was kind of fun.
Did they feed it?
Worked out. Huh?
Did they feed it?
No, no, they helped me get it up to one of the higher branches.
No, I got that. Thanks.
Yeah, and so, but they got food after we had a good conversation. Everyone's really appreciative, which is pretty awesome. And then just a quick little tag for the Altadena Farmers Market. Also now, there's been an increase in awareness and so we have, we, one of 10 volunteers helping out are, they're donating senior bundles, vegetables, so you can go and get a vegetable bundle. And also there's EBT service there as well.
Yeah, I, I, as we were talking about the business that, that farmers market, lots of our local businesses have been doing so much for the community. The Farmers Market has been doing what Councilman Blount's been talking about. grocery outlet's been actually working and partnering with food banks. Webster Pharmacy has been doing free deliveries for medications. The list goes on. It would be nice if we could have a list somewhere, maybe the Chamber or someone we can do. If people can submit, because we don't know what people are doing. We, we can't actually go around and do footwork to look for it. But if people know of businesses that and what they're doing, I know we've seen them on social media, posted business after business and we can support them. Again, it would be nice if we can actually, you know, I know some of our social, Facebook pages and groups have listed some of these businesses as well, but maybe having a permanent page somewhere, somebody, we could do that.
That's a good, that's a good idea, Billy. And if people would like to send those, that, those comments to the chamber, we'll put something together and get it out there and can compile it for the community. We'd be happy to do that.
And you don't have to be a chamber member for this, for this case, correct?
No, no, not at all. No, we've been supporting, you know, really any business in the area, you know, primarily Altadena, but many on the outskirts as well.
And if anybody has, for instance, unincorporated coffee, they actually sent me a flyer to send out. They sent it to the chamber. So if a business is open, they have a flyer, they send it to the chamber address, it will go out.
Yeah, and, and then there's also two, I mean, all these small businesses are doing something and they're so vital to our community. The health of our community is based on the economy of our, of our small businesses. You know, and, and each one, I'm thinking you're saying that, and then, you know, you, everyone's worried about packages and delivery right now. And, and, you know, Hoopla has, they'll take the deliveries for you. I mean, that, I, yeah, let's just do everything we can to support each other. I know we're all in the same boat. And I know money's tight and no one's saying spend money that you don't have. But if you are going to spend it on something, rather than get taken down the hill, let's just try and keep it in town. And Doug, thanks for suggesting that and let's follow up so we can pass any information on.
Yes, please do.
May, may, may I ask a question on maybe country?
You're on mute?
You muted yourself, Okori.
Start again. You're still on mute. Councilmember Zimmy, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself there?
I did.
There you go.
Okay, thanks. All right, with the CARES Act, I just want to add that for Doug, if anyone within our community, the small businesses are struggling, getting the EIDL or the PPP, I can assure you, they should, I recommend that they call directly to the SBA. They are responding, they are answering their questions. They are answering their phones as well. I'd like to thank Congresswoman Judy Chu for pushing for the small businesses all, all across the country. But in particular for us in Altadena, those forms are not that difficult. But if you do need some additional guidance, please call the SBA and they will guide you. The reason why I say that is that I am an accountant and I'm doing a lot of those consulting for the small businesses. As of right now, if you are a small business and you are, say, a corporation or an LLC, if you have elected to be treated for tax purposes as an S corporation and you do not have an employee, you are basically left out for now. So I'll encourage you, if you fall within that bucket that is missing as of right now, please contact the SBA or Congresswoman Judy Chu so that they are aware. But the forms are not that difficult. As a matter of fact, anyone in our community that has any questions regarding that, I'll be happy to contribute as, you know, contribute my experience as to that. So Doug, if anyone were to call you struggling on how to go through the process, you know, contact me. I'm in town.
Okay, very generous. Thanks, Okori.
I said one of the generous offer. Thank you. And I will add, you know, please pass the information on, Doug, but also too, if anyone's listening in here and needs our support, you can also find Councilman Buzimi's information on our website or the Altadena Town Council website. And you can also contact me directly. So thank you so much. Any more questions before we move on?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next report is the Altadena Library. This is going to be item 4.2, Nikki Winslow, Director.
Good evening. I'm so happy to see all of you. It's been, feels like a very, very long time for sure. First, I want to say thank you to all of our library staff. It is actually National Library Worker Day today, so I thought it was only appropriate to start my report with that. So if you're connected in any way virtually to library staff, please reach out and say thank you. They have been so flexible, adaptive, and responsive during this closure. And I'm going to cover a lot of the things that we're doing in my report, but I just wanted to point out that it's coincidentally National Library Worker Day. Okay, so first I'm going to talk about some of our digital services. So to combat the spread of the coronavirus and to protect library staff and the public, we closed the library at end of day on March 13 and are following the safer at-home guidelines provided by the governor. So the very soonest that we'll open to the public, and again, that's who knows what's going to happen as I think we're all feeling right now. The earliest we would potentially open is May 18. But we did want to point out, even though our buildings are closed, your Alina Digital Library is open 24/7 online. We're excited to share a wide variety of resources to educate, inspire, and entertain, which I think a lot of us need right now during your time at home. These include, and Hoopla, which is at the top of the list, is a brand new one. We were able to get that vendor to bring us on board in about a week turnaround. They have about 700,000 items in the Hoopla catalog. And one of the main reasons we brought this service on board was because they stream movies. We didn't have any other online movie content. So we now have access to movies, music, e-audio, ebooks, as well as comics and graphic novels. The cool thing about Hoopla that sets it a little bit apart from Cloud Library is that everything is always available. It's a pay-per-use model, so if it's in their catalog and it shows up in there, you can check it out right away. And there is a five-item limit on Hoopla because it is a pay-per-use system. But I'd highly encourage everyone to check that one out. It's brand new. And again, we, we put that one live within the last two weeks. I mentioned at one of my last presentations to Town Council that we were switching from Overdrive to Cloud Library. We did that in the end of February and the numbers have been off the charts, quite honestly. Like we pulled up the circulation statistics with Overdrive and I think we were averaging under 1,000 circulations a month in Overdrive. And with Cloud Library, we circulated like 4,000 items in March alone. So people are definitely getting on Cloud Library, checking out those ebooks and e-audio. And there is no, I mean, I think there's a 50-item limit, but if one of you can read 50 books at a time, congratulations. So check out to your heart's content through Cloud Library. In addition to that, we also have a resource called Brainfuse. So many of us parents have become our, our children's teachers overnight. I'm one of them. I have a 13-year-old son and it's really fun getting him to do homework right now, let me tell you. Interestingly, Brainfuse has a feature called Homework Help that gives live tutoring to students every day from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And that's not just like simple subjects. Literally, I was looking at it the other day. It, they'll tutor up to calculus. And students can also get some help with ACT, SAT preparation because I know like a lot of high school students were enrolled in, in-person classes. So this is a really great resource and again, 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM every day of the week. The other one I wanted to mention is Tumble Books, which is an online collection of picture books with animation, sounds, music, and narration. So for the, you know, the little ones that are home that miss their picture books, which I know virtual doesn't necessarily take the place of, but at least there is that available. So I did want to point out that all of these things are available through our website, which is altadinallibrary.org. You just need your library card. And for those of you that don't have one, first of all, shame on you. But you can actually get, sign up for a library card through our website and get full access to all of these things. So if you don't have one, that's, that's not an excuse not to get signed up and take advantage of all of these things that are available at your fingertips. So we also, with staff all working from home, we are offering live chat and phone references each day. Live chat and reference questions are being taken by the library staff from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM and then 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So if you'd rather, you know, chat or get on the phone with one of the staff members, you definitely can do that. And we're also offering live chat to teens every afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 so they can connect with Isabel, our teen librarian. So again, that's available. The other thing we wanted to highlight a little bit were some of our virtual events. Obviously, we're not offering any in-person events right now to adhere to social distancing rules. But we did want to highlight that this year's Poetry and Cookies, which is an annual event that we have, is going to take place this Sunday, April 26th at 1:00 PM using the Zoom platform. If you visit, so let me just point out, friends of the Altadena Library are excited to offer this annual event using the Zoom platform. This virtual celebration will include a ceremonial passing of the laurels to the new poet's laureate as well as some live readings from the Altadena Literary Review 2020. We're also thrilled to announce that they have arranged for local Tonga, Tonga elder and poet Gloria Ar- oh, I'm mispronouncing. Araliainas, who is also featured in the book to open the ceremony. We definitely encourage everyone to jump on and be part of this event. You can also learn more about where to buy the book, which is, I believe, going to be published in a digital format as well at altadinallibrary.org-poetry. In addition to that, we're having our first ever Altadena Library Board of Trustees meeting this coming Monday, April 27th at 5:00 PM. In some ways, this was almost like a test run for Chloe and I a little bit. We've been preparing for that. Being that we need to comply with the Brown Act, people that will be able to do live public comment as well as email in or submit a public comment through the website up to two hours before the meeting. So those of you that are interested, you can go to our website to look at the board package, which we published last week. And that'll be taking place next Monday at 5:00 PM. And in addition to that, my marketing and community, and community engagement manager Chloe has put together a Just Show Up Online Club on Wednesdays at 4:00. If you want to connect with your neighbors in this online club, they're discussing what they're reading, watching, and really anything else. You know, a lot of us, I think, miss getting together with people in person. So this is just kind of an informal place to jump on board and talk to your neighbors. We're also doing a virtual crafting club, Saturdays at 10:00 and Mondays at 4:00. So if you're working on craft projects and want to connect with others at the same time, please jump on. It's, it's also using the Zoom platform. And all of these events can be found on our webpage. If you go to altadinallibrary.org, click on Events and then you just click in the calendar and that will connect you virtually into those various programs. The other thing I did want to point out was that we have had staff producing tons and tons of short videos and virtual content. If you visit just our homepage, there's a, like you can see a screenshot of, I believe Chloe told me, we put over 30 videos on our YouTube page within the last month. So it's staff doing songs, crafts, activities, storytelling, and more to come. So I'd encourage you to subscribe to our YouTube page because we're posting new videos pretty much every day. And compliments to the staff. They're enthusiastic and our board president, one of the phone calls, Katie Clark, when we were talking one day, she said, "It's, it's kind of distracting because I want to listen to the next chapter of the book and I have work to do." So I'd encourage everyone to take a look at some of those videos. Next, I wanted to talk about Altadena Connections. So in coordination with the Altadena Town Council, so thank you to all of you, and several other community partners, we have helped create a new webpage called Altadena Connections, which can be accessed at www.altadinannews.org. It is housed on our website, but we wanted to create a URL that was easy for everyone to remember. Our marketing and community engagement manager Chloe Cabaye has been keeping the page updated and also creating very informative e-blasts that are being emailed out to over 14,000 people, anywhere from one to three times per week currently. These are compiled with information from a variety of government agency websites and updates, as well as our community partners and individuals that are emailing information to us to include. We're very pleased with the response to the centralized information source and have seen a 25% to 40% open rate to the emails delivered. We encourage you to check it out if you haven't yet, haven't had the chance yet. You can also help us with this effort by emailing any news updates from your organization or group to news@altadinallibrary.org, add us to your email subscription list, or leave a voicemail tip at the number mentioned, six two six seven nine eight zero eight three three extension one two three. We also would love it if you'd-
One, two, six. Sorry, extension one, two, six.
Extension one, two, six, yes. Also announce the Initiative's website to your email list or social media followers tagging hashtag Altadena News. We have graphics for you. Feel free to email myself or Chloe and we can provide those. Also, join our network and share our future posts with your audience as they become available. This is something that kind of was born out of this crazy time, but I think is going to be a really powerful tool and resource for the community of Altadena as we move forward. Next, I just want to really briefly touch on census. So California has just over a 50% self-response rate to the 2020 census so far. Los Angeles has received 47.6 responses as of Monday, April 20. Here is a chart breaking down responses thus far from each census tract compared to their final response rate in 2010. I think all of us were a little worried about how this was going to go. I mean, the library had set up like many, many dates to go out to the community to, to promote through outreach, getting people to log in and fill out the census. I think the numbers are really encouraging, but again, I wanted to bring this up just to emphasize the point that we need to continue to encourage people to get onto the website and fill it out. We continue to promote the importance of filling out the census to the community through our e-blasts, our website, and social media efforts. If you haven't filled it out yet, please go to my2020census.gov to fill it out. It literally takes less than five minutes and will inform federal funding that we receive for the next 10 years. The census result helped determine how billions of dollars in federal funding flow into the states and communities. It will also determine how many seats in Congress each state gets and is mandated by the Constitution. And just in a personal, I guess, a, a personal plug for the library district, we're going to be using that census data to help with districts for the library board of trustees. We're going to be working with a consultant next year to help draw those lines. So the more people that respond to the census, the better our data will be to inform the way that we district. So again, we just wanted to plug the census since we had the opportunity to do it here.
Nikki, can I ask a quick question? What's the, what's the deadline on the census completion?
It is July, is it July 12? No. It is July, is it July twelfth? No.
It's the last day in July.
July thirty-first.
Last day of July.
Yeah, yeah, March twelfth through July thirty-first. So yeah, if you have email lists, definitely, um, you know, we're happy to share any graphics or information that you need from us, but we, we definitely want to push people to be filling out the census. And I don't know if all of you have, but it is so easy. Like, it blew my mind how simple it was. It was just a couple of questions.
Well, what, what, it, it, talking about the census, one of the things that I always think about is it, it, it does, uh, the, the numbers from the census actually influences the amount of funding that comes into a community, which you actually addressed. So if you have, if somebody chooses not to be included in the census, you are actually taking money out of the pocket of our community when you're probably using services and happy to use the services within the community. So please think about that, if, when you're doing the census, please fill out the census and think about that, that if you don't do it, you're taking money out of, you're choosing to take money out of the community. So, uh, think about that. That was all. Thank you.
Yeah, the number that, like, we've been told is it's on average about two thousand dollars a person per year. So for every person that doesn't get counted, that's twenty thousand dollars over ten years. A family of five, that's a hundred thousand dollars that your community is not getting.
That's huge.
Mm-hmm, it's very big.
And, and everybody needs those services.
Mm-hmm, yeah, infrastructure, I mean, it's, it impacts so many things, so. Again, I just wanted to plug that because we have not been able to physically go out in the community, which made us very sad because we felt like we were going to connect with a lot of groups because of this opportunity, but, um, again, we just wanted to emphasize that. Okay, and lastly, um, we know how many people need and want us to reopen. Plus, the staff definitely miss our patrons. So, uh, right now, what we're, what we're looking at is a phased reopening. Again, we don't know exactly when that's gonna happen, but, um, we, we have what we call our Emergency Action and Safety Team. It's BEAST for short, is we're working right now on finalizing a phased reopening plan for both buildings that will likely begin with staff coming in before an official public reopening, once safer at home orders are lifted. Some of those things that we're looking at are how to implement social distancing. You know, is it like, it's definitely gonna involve removing some furniture, looking at how we lay out computers, are we gonna have sneeze guards? Um, as well as incorporating protective equipment for both the public and staff, um, following guidelines from public health officials, uh, when the time comes to reopen. We've been, I've been working with this team for the last, like, probably three to four weeks, and we're going to be presenting a draft of it to the board this coming Monday. So if you're interested, you could drop into the board meeting or just, um, email me and I'd be happy to share that document once it's more out of draft form. Some of the considerations that we're looking at, um, the main thing is safety of the public and staff. So any services offered once safer at home orders are lifted will take the following into consideration. How to safely allow staff to interact with the public, um, how to internally process books and materials in a way that limits staff from contact with potentially infected surfaces, and how to prepare both staff and the public for potentially rolling safer at home orders that may occur in the future. And like, a really big part of that we find is how we're gonna integrate programming back into what we do. Right now, we have a s- a summer reading program committee that has pretty much already made the decision that all of summer reading is gonna happen virtually. So more information to come on that. Like, when you guys meet next month, I'll probably provide more information. But it's gonna be a program that, um, they can earn badges online. There will be programming offered online, but we don't foresee being able to have any performers at the library this summer, where we bring in, you know, fifty to a hundred plus people to these events. So I wanted to close out my report with a quote. So I think the health of our civilization, the depth of our awareness about the underpinnings of our culture and our concern for the future can all be tested by how well we support our libraries. We think, we know that we're very important to the community and we're really excited to figure out a way to get open. But in the meantime, again, please visit our website. The staff are working really hard to create content and provide as many resources as we can from a distance. So again, please check out our website, YouTube page, and social media pages, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
First of all, I wanna, I, I just personally want to say thank you so much because if people wanted to know, um, how useful the services the library is, especially at times like this, this meeting wouldn't be happening right now if it wasn't for the library. So, uh, this meeting alone is an indication of how important, uh, is the, the, the health of our library is. So thank you for that. And I also want to point out that, uh, the, the page that you had listed, um, in, in reference to COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen, um, the Altadena Connection. Um, I also wanted to point that, I also went there and under Events, I posted, uh, this particular, uh, meeting. And so I encourage everybody else to do so. If you have a meeting coming up, the library is, is right now a great way, uh, get great central location for us for information. And so if you have something coming up and you wish to share it, please go. It's really easy to fill out. It's really easy to do. The library will vet it and it will be posted. So, uh, thank you for that. And then one last thing. Um, several people at the beginning of this was making the comments that if you could not get connected on Wi-Fi, you could go to the parking lot of the library and use their Wi-Fi because they left it on for the public. Is that still true?
Um, we left the parking lot, well, we had staff coming to open the gate because there's a locked gate, um, for the first week. But when the safer at home, uh, orders were made by the governor, we stopped co- like, asking staff to come in to open the gate. Plus, we didn't feel like it was responsible to encourage people to leave home to come use Wi-Fi. So my understanding is if you park on, um, Santa Rosa, you, you probably can get Wi-Fi, but we are not opening the gate at this point.
Thank you.
Tomorrow's Earth Day, and, uh, so I am starting to revive a, uh, virtual Wild L.A. Uh, with, uh, some community members. Uh, so these are, uh, reading groups. Where's Chloe?
Sorry, I'm here. I'm, I'm just not on video.
Yes, so, um, uh, if anybody wants to join, we're working out some logistics, but we're, on May sixth, uh, we're already gonna start some programming and we're calling it Wild Wednesdays.
Oh, cool.
Wild L.A.
Thank you.
Anyone who wants to join, uh, our virtual reading club, uh, again, it will be actively virtual. So we're creating some programming for families, uh, things you can find in your backyard, uh, or while you're on your community walk, getting some exercise, might be able to find some, uh, great, uh, moments of nature. So anyway, um, my website address is, one of my websites, but my email is on the website, Altadena Town Council. Dorothy Wong, join my group.
And I will share, Dorothy, that, um, one of the authors of Wild L.A., which was chosen as our Read Adina Book of the Year, is also, um, working with us to pr- uh, produce programming for, um, our YouTube page as well. So to help support your efforts and your reading group, we will also have nature-based programming from one of the authors of the book, who is also a nature photographer, and those will be coming soon.
So check out the YouTube page.
Any, any more questions?
Added comments to Antonio. Uh, so first, I just want to thank the library for, you know, for hosting the Zoom and for allowing us to use your platform. Um, and also for the Altadena Connections. I think that was very helpful and really communicating with the community, uh, specifically Altadena. Uh, because we, I think we all know that, uh, communication is an issue here. And so, um, and more specifically, uh, emergency communication, because there was a lot of questions, uh, regarding with what was going on and, and that kind of thing. And so I think, uh, by having that resource of the connections and the library, um, and inserting some of the Altadena Council, uh, announcements was very helpful and, uh, helping us get the word out as well. And so I just wanted to make that comment and also to raise up the concern to the council as well, uh, in terms of what is the continuity, you know, the business continuity for the council in emergency situations, because I think this whole COVID nineteen situation kind of exposed, um, you know, what will the council do in an emergency situation? And I know we're all new to this and we're trying to figure things out as we go. Um, but it kind of just made me wonder, you know, in an emergency situation, how do we get the word out? Do, you know, besides the website that we have, uh, maybe people don't know that we have a website. Uh, so those kind of things, you know, like, you know, the business continuity for the town council, and what kind of plans, uh, do we need to make to continue to, to support the community?
Any other comments? I will, I will say to Antonio, you, you're absolutely right, and, and I think every organization and every group is now learning about, uh, what happens in, in crisis and, and that was also to Deb's point we asserted, is they keep telling us every month, the whole community, all organizations, all groups, every month about preparedness, and we still not prepared, right? So hopefully this will be a lesson to us all and we'll be better prepared next time. Um, any more questions, Dorothy? Councilmember Wong? Then we're moving on. You're muted, Dorothy.
Yes. No, just a quick, uh, note on that. So that's why I, I'm really excited with, again, all of these communication, um, you know, improvements, growth, the collaboration. Uh, so really, I am excited again and encourage everybody, uh, to, uh, get involved with Map Your Neighborhood because a lot of the elements coming from that is communication. Uh, and I will add, uh, to the website, um, council member Simmons and I, is he still here? Uh, we went to the, uh, Firewise, uh, workshops sometime, I think it was in February. Time flies when you're having fun. But it was really some great educational opportunities for us, not only to understand our emergency preparedness evacuation, but also, uh, simple things like homehardening, which most of us don't know, and also how potentially vulnerable Altadena can be. And we can be less vulnerable the more we collaborate and the more we organize, uh, with the different emergency preparedness, uh, opportunities. And, you know, instead of doing four different things, somehow they all kind of work together. Uh, and that arguably, uh, I won't, we don't have to go into this topic any further, but it does then arguably have us think about, uh, Edison and, you know, what it means to cut the trees around the power lines. So it's not time for discussion now, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Um, five committee reports, and we're gonna start with five point one, Land Use, so Councilmember Markson. You're on mute. You're on mute, Diane. Councilmember Markson, you're on mute, okay.
I'm saying, I know, I know. I'm saying, stop for a minute. Let me find the button. I'm good. All right. Um, the land use, the land use, uh, committee has not met in a while, as you all know. Um, but we are alive and well and working on a couple of different projects. We're trying to, as you all know, our due diligence process means going to people's homes, um, and talking with them ordinarily, and that's a big challenge right now. So we've been working with, um, we don't have a lot of projects, by the way, that are going on right now, but we have been working with regional planning to figure out, um, what we can do and get them information they need. Should we need to meet, we'll figure out a way to do that. Um, but I did want everybody to know that if anybody has any, um, projects they know of or need help with or anything, to please let me know. And we were addressing everything on an individual basis, and depending upon how complex it is, um, we'll, you know, we'll do whatever we can. Uh, regional planning, they're not in their offices, um, it seems, but they are available. So I have been interacting via email. Um, so anyway, that's, let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. Um, like I said, we are alive and well and working on projects as needed. Uh, of course, we only meet to, if we really have something to vote on and, or get a presentation on. So anyway, does anybody have any questions about land use? Okey-dokey.
Okay, moving on. Item five point two, Election Committee. Councilmember Jones.
The election committee report is as follows. Enmarked councilmembers received a draft copy of the election rules. The rules, dates, and committee members could not be voted into effect at the March ATC meeting due to the Los Angeles County's ban on public gatherings and meetings. Due to the current crisis and county's stay-at-home order, the election has not been canceled, but has been postponed until further notice. Understanding that some councilmember's seats are coming up for reelection, I'm requesting any councilmember not running for reelection to notify me in writing or by email of their decision not to run for reelection no la- later than May eighth. May eighth was the original date applications were due. If a councilmember decides not to run for reelection, they will vacate their seat at the end of the two thousand twenty term in June. Those councilmembers who intend to run for reelection and choose to remain on the council as an interim until the present crisis is over and we hold the election. This may change if the stay-at-home order changes or is lifted earlier than expected. In the meantime, know that your council representatives are working together to ensure that election rules and procedures are maintained throughout the rollout of county direct directives. We will continue to pro- provide updates through our website and through our council meetings. All this was reviewed and discussed with the executive committee. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Any concerns? Anybody?
I, I, I know the elections is a big question right now, but, uh, obviously this is a n- new environment for us, so we're all learning as we go. And the executive committee tried to make a decision that would be, uh, in the best interest of everybody. So there are those that, that didn't wish to continue to, to do what they wished and those that did, um, to support the council in the interim. So, um, thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna move on. Item five point three, Film Committee. Pat Sutherland, do you have a report?
Yes. Uh, just a couple of very brief things for the, from the Film Committee. Um, we're receiving, uh, questions from residents regarding, um, is there still a ban on filming in Altadena? Um, has it been extended? We know what's happening with it. And basically, the answer is that, um, the, the filming, the holding ban will be continued from, I think it was April first was the original, you know, date it was supposed to stop, um, because it's going to be following the county, um, uh, no work guidelines. So whatever the, whatever the county guidelines are, that filming will go right along with that. When we receive further information that it may be starting up again, then we'll, we will let you know. And secondly, the, um, committee has been working for quite some time to update all of the FAQs. Um, we finished, we finally finished it, uh, and it is now also, um, on the, on the, um, uh, ATC website, updated. And thank you, thank you, thank you very much, uh, Dot, for getting it up there. We, we spent a lot of time working on this thing, so, um, please, all of you, take a look to see if you, there's a lot of interesting stuff in there. And goodness knows, some of it will change again, but that's the latest and greatest. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, moving on. I think this is, is just also showing that even despite this, uh, whilst not being able to meet and maybe the community doesn't realize, we do have many committees and the committees may have me- may be doing different, um, activities right now, but they are still all active. Um, and I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Um, item five point four, uh, Safe Streets Committee, which is, uh, council number one.
Uh, hello, everybody. Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, I just wanted to report on some different things. My cat is eating my, uh, computer right now. Go away, go away. Um, anyway, so first of all, uh, as it relates to transportation, uh, trails are closed. Uh, and that includes LA County Trails, uh, and Forest Trails. So, um, even though it's social distancing within the order, there are, uh, public health code violations.
involved in crossing into the trails. So hopefully folks will uh pay attention to that as that does concern uh a lot of the neighborhoods um in our community are also close to trailheads. So thank you for that. And while we're walking on the streets, we're staying safer at home, but it is uh essential for people to exercise. Uh, there's some amazing things uh that you can do. Uh, if you, so as the Highway Patrol reported, it came down to noticing people are speeding and often it's because the roads are open and often now more people are walking and biking and families are out. So um, one really cool thing you can do, which I mentioned before, and now more than ever, it's a great time, and I will post this on the Altadena Safe Streets page, on the committee page. It's called uh Street Stories. And Street Story is an app from the Safe Transportation Research and Education Center, Berkeley Safe Trek. And that provides data across the state of California, again, that LA County Public Works uh can use when they're studying different um, you know, traffic safety improvements, mobility improvements uh in our community. So you can actually go on your phone and download the app and you can go, I love walking on Glen Rose. I can see the peacocks. Uh, I have lots of safe space to walk. Or you might go, I'm walking on Loma Alta and I feel unsafe because the cars are going fast. So it documents when and where uh you have that. So it will note that it happened during COVID uh time, but it's also an opportunity to have us think about where we can walk safely and when uh traffic safety improvements come to Altadena through our own fruition or through street planning, all that sort of stuff. This is data that's in uh the state system or Office of Traffic Safety data that the county can look at. And um, so I encourage you to look at Street Story and tell your story while you're walking the neighborhood safely and socially distanced. Um, and so that's that. And then I did get one email today because of the trucking of the Devil's Gate Dam work is going to start, so they sent me a little thing to read and we can invite them next month. Um, uh, because they're also working on uh the date. So uh LA County Public Works says, LA County Public Works is preparing for its second year of work on the Devil's Gate Reservoir Restoration Project. Uh, on Monday, April twenty seventh, which is next Monday, workers will be remobilizing construction equipment and preparing the site for sediment removal activities currently anticipated to begin the week of May the twelfth. That will be the sediment removal trucking, potentially will start on May the twelfth. A separate notification will be provided prior to the start of sediment hauling to confirm the exact start date. Cement removal at Devil's Gate Dam Reservoir is necessary to provide flood relief to downstream communities that have endured nearly a decade of elevated flood risk. Habitat restoration activities will continue onsite to create over seventy acres of enhanced habitat for wildlife. For more information and to stay up to date, go to devilsgateproject.com. And you can also email devilsgateproject@pw.lacounty.gov. And if you really wanna get some quick information, they just resurfaced Oak Grove, so I was asking them about the bicycle lanes that were being put back in. I called six two six four five eight two five zero seven. That's on their website and one of the project managers picked up the phone and we had a great conversation. Uh, so that's it on that. And um uh Metro, if you wanna find out any information, if you take the bus, again, Next Gen Bus uh is looking for comments. This is the update of Metro's best bus service that hasn't happened uh until since twenty five years ago, so it's a pretty significant change. Um, so there is time for public comments, Metro Next Gen Bus. And I'll put that also on the Safe Streets page. And of course, service is ever changing. Um, last day, we were at the Sunday service, a current service, but things are changing, so uh you can stay up to date at metro.net. That's it. Any questions? Thanks, everyone.
Moving on, thank you, thank you, Dorothy. Uh, council member Lee, the education committee, item five point five.
Hi. Okay, so I'd like to start, this is the education committee report, but I'd like to start with the census because it's super important. And I talked with somebody at the census today, so I could really give you good information. And he told me that right now, the entire response to the COVID nineteen pandemic is based, the entire financial response, all this money going out, this is all based on the twenty ten census. So the resources that are coming to us from the federal government is coming from the numbers provided from the twenty ten census. So let that one sink in. So this is why we all have to fill out the census and there's no reason we can't reach upwards of a hundred percent here in Altadena. Everything that affects our community, such as school lunches, senior housing, senior resources, Head Start is all determined by census numbers. So please fill out the census. Um, it's censustwentytwenty.gov and it, I, please do it. It's about our entire community. It's about all of us together. Here's my PUSD report. Um, on the day that schools closed in March, every single student went home with their Chromebook so that they could begin online instruction. And the online instruction, Monday through Friday, continues. Um, a grading policy is being finalized right now and we are assured that, quote, this is from PUSD, no child is harmed in terms of their grade because of this crisis. Additionally, PUSD has already served thirty thousand grab and go meals to families and are still serving. In Altadena, Elliott Arts Magnet Academy is the grab and go site, and I'd like to add that we have council members who have been helping with the grab and go. Also, PUSD is now planning for the summer school program, both virtual and in person, depending on the situat- depending on our situation as we go forward. They just purchased fifty additional hotspots for families who have no internet access. And they have a partnership with Sprint and they're looking at additional hotspots. A survey will be sent out shortly to um families um to talk about the needs of students and parents. And that's my education report.
Any questions from anyone? Um, okay, I I just wanna make one co- two quick comments. One on the census, I think it was really pertinent when um um Nikki Windsor actually pointed out that if you choose not to partake,
Yes.
you, that community has lost twenty thousand dollars for you choosing not to. And twenty thousand for every other member of your family that you chose not to add to that. That, when you think of number wise, at this point, how far are twenty thousand dollars would go in our community to feed our community? Or educate our community, this huge.
I, I have another, okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish that off.
Um, I, I wanted to say that I, after talking to this man at the census today, I think it's really important right now that we reach out and talk to our friends and neighbors and families. And I think we have total license right now to ask them if they filled out the census. Because like when he said to me that every dollar that we're looking at that's coming from the federal government, those, those dollars are based on the numbers from the twenty ten census. If somebody's on the fence about filling out the census form, that may change their minds. That's it.
Thank you. And the, the next point I wanted to point out is that uh many of us council members, we have children in PUSD, my daughter included. And and I want to praise, I have friends with uh children in other schools as well, but I want to praise PUSD. I never saw a school, unified or otherwise, that reacted more positively, swifter, and took more care of the students than PUSD did during this crisis. But and as you pointed out, by the time my daughter left on Friday, they made sure that every single child was equipped and classes started on Monday morning. And uh that uh and they haven't missed a beat. And there's, a- and the ones with lunches, as you said, many council members have actually been supportive with that and they've and helping PUSD get the lunches out. Um, they've supported our community in ways that you couldn't respond. I think it, it, it's, it's really stressed to us the importance of making sure uh PUSD is healthy. Um, because they have proven their worth in the community just for this crisis and they're concerned for the kids like no one else. So thank you to them and thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? Okay.
Yeah, I had, hey, Billy had a question. Does the census also go to businesses in the community? I don't think so. It's just, it's just the residents.
It's a count of the people, so.
Yeah.
And I'll just say just something real quick, and I hear it more and more on TV. If you wanna research your family's history, the census will help you go back. It goes back to bib- biblical times. And the census in the United States, that's how we located people that you wanna, so it's helpful, not just for money, but because it's our uh record of who was here when.
Thank you. Anything else? No more comments, questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to council member uh Sutherland. We're gonna go into the section of general public comments. Again, I would, uh, she's gonna make a comment uh uh and have it move forward. I just wanna apologize for everybody that we don't give you the chance to stand at the podium and address us face to face, but uh this is the new form right now. Council member Sutherland. You're muted. You are mute.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted it. Um, we did ask to have people send their public comments to me directly and um I have two to read into the record tonight. The first one is from um Ann, Ann uh Hickamackam. Assembly member Chris R. Holden sends his well wishes for the safety and well-being of everyone and says, while my office is physically closed, my staff will be able to provide assistance Monday through Friday from nine to five. We can provide the most up-to-date information and resources for any state-related issues, including unemployment insurance. Visit our website at www dot asmdc dot org slash Holden or contact us at six two six three five one nineteen seventeen or assemblymember.holden at assembly.ca.gov. The state legislature plans to reconvene in Sacramento in May to revise our state budget and hold committee hearings on a limited number of bills. Please continue to adhere to safety protocols provided by the public health professionals. Stay at home, wear a mask, and wash your hands. That's that one. And the other one comes from um Michelle Zach. And these are her words, I'm reading directly what she said. I encourage the town council to move to sign into a letter about the changeover in Altadena's street lighting to three thousand Kelvin LED. Your support is important. We need an immediate intervention because unfortunately, between the time when the board of supervisors approved the contract and then awarded it to Southern California Edison, the technology has evolved and the specifications being used became outdated. Today, the Society of Illumination Engineers recommends no higher than twenty-two hundred Kelvin because the blue ridge glare of three thousand Kelvin has been found to increase accidents and pedestrian deaths everywhere it has been installed. Please see attached letter to supervisor Barker. As of today, there are five signatories. So Flight Altadena, Altadena Heritage, Safe Streets Committee of the Altadena Town Council, the Arroyo Seco Foundation, and Neighbors for Building a Better Altadena. We need a strong coalition to express to supervisor Barker how important and how urgent it is to halt the current purchase order of three thousand Kelvin lights or we could be stuck with dangerous and ugly lighting for the next generation. And I do have a copy of the um of the letter itself. And those are the um public comments that we received.
Okay, a statement that um as typical in public meetings, we don't respond to public comments, but what we've had, have asked in this case is to make sure if you do give us a a public comment to read into record, we wanna make sure that you give us our contact information. And the reason why is so that it can be uh census track and council member um um specific. And so uh any information you give, all your information you give, we give to the census track representative for you that can assist you after the fact. What I would like to say in this particular case is that um, again, we don't respond to public comments. However, when you brought up that one regarding a letter, um, and you know, to make a decision right now in in public or to try and do something when no one has had time to analyze the situation or anything, not just this or anything. Um, that's not usually done, but I do think it will be appropriate if uh Safe Streets, I named it, was brought up during um that letter for sign-on. If Safe Streets, Dorothy would like to uh, um, because Safe Streets has already signed on to the pass the letter on to the commu- to the council members um and for consideration and what the request might be. And then um the council members will have time to look at it and be able to make an informed decision on whatever we uh move forward from that.
Oh, wait, Jeff's gonna ask a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, could, could you reiterate the, the proposed color temperature versus the preferred color temperature of the lighting?
But then we're getting into discussion for public comments. Once we start doing that, we have to allow it for all public comments.
Fine, I'm done.
My question, my question is, it's important, what, what Jeff is saying is really, really important. But um I think that that becomes a discussion that we need to do with the council in full. And I think that Jeff may have some insights beyond what, what I would know myself. And so I think he might be, it sounds like he may be an integral piece of information regarding this, which is why I think we should have one council member. But because council member one has already uh, committee has already uh been involved in this. If they could take the lead and gather information out and then any questions that council members may have can um be proposed at that time, and then we can deal with that. It, it, does that sound like an appropriate action? Um, at this time, I'm asking you as the council. Or would you guys, you know, like to discuss further, but I'm just a little.
I don't think this is something that we can quickly say yes, no, maybe, or anything else since I, you know, I, I for one know nothing.
Yeah.
And about this, about this.
If asked for a snap decision, I would say no.
Yeah, of course, of course. And and, you know, so and.
Yes, this is something I know something about.
Yeah.
Good, good, thank you.
Well, but we'll send the, send the um, um, the letter out if, if I'm, I'm assuming that you do have it, Dorothy. Otherwise, I had the letter, copy of the letter that went to the supervisor too.
So Jeff, because you're, you're uh making that comment and you do know and I, I trust your judgment, um, could you forward your concerns and your uh knowledge on this matter when this goes around?
Certainly, I'd just like to be able to actually get the data before I respond.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what you'll get.
That's what we, that's what we're trying to discuss here. We're not trying to, we're not trying to take something offline and do something in secret. We're trying to give everybody the opportunity to do their own research, as we should, anything that comes up. Is everybody in agreement? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, just uh, there was one more letter, Pat, that uh I asked you about that got emailed to you.
Oh, I thought that's, I thought that's the one you were talking about.
No, no.
Oh, then no, I didn't get anything else. So I, these are, I read the two that I got.
I have this a copy as well. Should I read it or?
Is it, is it, is it a two-minute uh?
That's one minute. One minute, ten seconds.
Uh, why, why are we reading letters that did not go?
Yeah, right.
Guy's chair. You can send it to her now and let her read it and we can maybe present it at the next meeting. But there's a protocol and everybody is needed to go to Pat, yeah.
It did go to Pat, but she.
No, this did not, this did not come, I have not received this with the one you're, anything that you're talking about. No, I just got the one from Michelle.
Okay, it might have got to you late. Okay, that's fine, I'm gonna read it.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay.
Anything else? Uh, council member McNapp, it looked like you had a question. No, yes? Okay, all right, uh, moving. Moving on. Next one is item seven, which we, has on the agenda, the last item, which is open discussion with council members. We had talked about bringing up, what we tried to do is make this particular meeting, especially the first one, is even though we've gone in depth on a few things, but to make it more relevant about what's happening in our community regarding this current crisis than your standard meeting. You know, COVID-19 related. So there's some topics around town, there's usually at this point, we do a census tract report or the opportunity to do a census tract report, which would be census tract specific. However, in this particular case, what we felt when we were setting up the agenda is that any particular reports that somebody might do right now would be based upon what could happen or, or what is actually affecting many census tracts. For example, the trails. That is a hot issue in town right now, that people aren't following the stay-at-home order, they're still using the trails and the parks. And that is affected in most census tracts. So what we felt was that, on this particular case, is that rather than doing a census tract report that individually about, it would be more on the basis of issues that are related across all census tracts. And that's why it's listed on the agenda as a general public, sorry, as an open discussion. What, there, there's a couple of things I would like to bring up. And one is trails and parks. And that goes to, I know Dorothy has been working really, really hard with the sheriff's department, with the county, with, with, with social media on doing signage and everything else we can to do to cover the trails and parks. And I know it's a major concern with the community. Where are we on this? And what can we tell people? And, and what knowledge do we have at this point that we can share? Go ahead, Dorothy.
Well, first of all, we're uniquely dynamic, similar but different. So I think each census tract has different, you know, vibe. My word I kind of come up with as it relates to, you know, how it's handled. But in just my brief analysis across the board, the issues are similar. Where signage is being put up, gates are being put up. And it's not like it all happened at once, just like COVID. Everything has been in evolution, right? In evolution on when the trail is closed, how they get handled. So, so from that aspect, I personally really worked with the neighbors that are around the trailheads in my census tract. And, and also with the county, who also was putting up sort of no parking signs. So I think along that line, it seems like there's a lot of no parking signs that have happened collectively across Altadena. Anyone can chime in and let me know otherwise. I have noticed, obviously, after the first week before the signs and the evolution of the signs and the stiffening, so to speak, of the order, there have been a lot less people. But there is still a consistent flow of people in, in my census tract. So the county at first had trail closure signs for their census tracts. I mean, for the ACT trails, the Crest Trails, et cetera, the county trails. And it sort of was green and it kind of matched their signage. So then I said, hey, can you make it brighter so it's more readable? And then they added a little QR code here. And then they actually blew them up to like 11 by 17 boards. And they worked with Parks and Recreation. And so they have this sign on boards. I don't know if it's made it all the way across Altadena as it relates to the Altadena Crest Trail and the Altadena and the LA County Trail System, which would include Eden Canyon.
Dorothy, any questions?
Yeah.
It has not made it up to the Rubio Vista Pleasant Ridge Trailhead that is a, is sort of a spur to the Crest Trail and Mount Echo Trail. There's blockages at the, at the Cobb Estate, but you get up to Pine Ridge and, or Pleasant Ridge and Rubio Vista. That's, that's kind of an unofficial trailhead, but it's a very accessible one. Similarly, down in the Camp Huntington area, it hasn't made any, any impact. It would be very helpful if you could pass on the request to put this, put similar no parking cones up in those areas as, you know, similar to what has been done at Pleasant Ridge. I'm sorry, not Pleasant Ridge. The, the Mount Wilson Toll Road, Pinecrest access area. If we could put this, put similar no parking restrictions up there, we've had a number of, I'll say incursions into the Pleasant Ridge Rubio Vista Trailhead that, that have been problematic. And there's no controls up there right now.
Yeah, I would just say that one of the better things to do without making dot point person for this is to reach out directly. That's how we got Rubio Canyon closed. That's how we got the trailhead above the Mount Low Trail closed that was wide open. Part of the issue is that some of these trailheads are managed by the county, some are managed by the Forest Service. The Forest Service has, does not feel doesn't have the bandwidth to close all of the access points in Altadena, so it's been a problem.
You reach out too.
I started with Suzie to get the Pinecrest Trail. That got closed on its own, but to get the no parking, the no, because they, you know, those first three weekends, it was just flooded with people.
And that's got the, the inconsistency of, you know, one side of the street is Pasadena, one side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But Pasadena was at least helpful in working with the county on that particular trailhead. Go ahead, Dorothy, you've got the other.
Dorothy was, was sort of taking point, so I was trying to.
Oh, go ahead.
As opposed to go parallel.
Yeah, well, Victoria's bringing up some good points, like I tried to focus on the census tracts that, you know, are in, I mean, the trailheads like Cheney, that obviously is a high-profile entrance point and the gate closures. So I.
Well, your census tract and 4601 are the two primary.
Yeah.
Areas of active trailheads.
So I couldn't help while I was talking with the Forest Service also. You know, they were, I was asking them, you know, they had these papers and they put them up in black and white, even this little stop, you know. So even this is not, you know, you would have to stop and really read it. So we started, you know, they made then an enlarged sign. So it was really an evolution. So there is a, there is sort of a template, so to speak, that could make its way over. And with the county, I created a Google map after talking to the residents. And then kind of created these little points where I, you know, we kind of suggested where to move things. We even have the message trailer. And then we moved it from the Canyon Crest hairpin to give it more visibility at Lincoln and Loma Alta. So when you drive up Lincoln, you can see all trails closed. So I think, again, there is sort of carving of things, but at the same time, as it relates to double work, I can share with you, you know. And again, I had mentioned Cobb Estate a few times because it's just up the road from Cheney Trail. And it has that similar odd sort of shared, well, when you get here, you're in the Forest Service. And even, you know, in the meadows, there are multiple, you know, points that you could get in. And then also the, the communication with Forest Service and the county and arguably, you know.
Well, even if you're going across the forest, the forest boundary and the interface, but we shouldn't be doing it at all because all it does is shift traffic from one to another.
Yeah, well, the Forest Service kind of covered their, their gates and then we just kind of filled in where it made its way into Altadena, where the community is. So we're putting their signage up and then just they provided their signage for us to add once we, because it was access to the Forest Service, right? Into the Forest Service property at Cheney. So we kind of supplemented. And then because the Altadena Crest Trail crosses through, over to Cheney, it does apply to both trails and Eden Canyon similarly, and Cobb similarly. You know, and how Rubio Canyon and also Arroyos and Foothills Conservancies, for example, there, there are some of the land management. So there's definitely layers to it.
The Rubio Vista Pleasant Ridge Trailhead is, goes, enters through Arroyo and Foothills Conservancy.
Yeah. So that's where, you know, it gets a little complicated. So we did create one where it says all trails closed, just to kind of help. Because every day, still to this day, I'm getting, you know, residents feeling the stress and then residents amongst themselves feeling stress.
Well, again, I would argue a unified response would be better because if you, you push on one point and don't, don't work on another, it just shifts the burden and it creates a, we have up in the, the Pleasant Ridge Rubio Vista corner, that trailhead is, it's actually not a very safe trailhead. There's, you get, you get a few hundred yards up that trail, it gets pretty sketchy. And it's gotten undue hard use from people that shouldn't be up there, vis a vis skill level.
For sure. So it's definitely multi-layered here. So as it relates to what the best solutions are, consistency does make sense. And in looking at it, for the most part, there are no parking signs that kind of make their way across our community. And then the no-trail signs. I'm happy, I'm happy to share what I did, if you want to make your own communication, or I can share it with Public Works that I've been working with.
You know, the, the, there were, you know, there are a couple of dozen no parking cones posted at Pinecrest. Was that done through the city or through county?
Sounds like the county. Oh, between Pasadena, you mean, yeah.
Well, Victoria seemed to have been.
My understanding was that it, yeah, my, my understanding was that it was done through county, but I'm not sure who directed who to do it. Because it was really one of the first things done because those residents were up in arms because we, you know, there would be three to 500 people coming through there at the.
So it wasn't, you, you weren't, you weren't directly involved, it was really the residents?
No, I was involved, but they were already, it was already in play, it was already in process at the very beginning.
Okay, it'd be helpful to find out what the.
Who did that.
Direction was there because the, the Rubio Vista Pinecrest, or I'm sorry, Rubio Vista Pleasant Ridge Trailhead that is sort of between Pinecrest and Cobb Estate is largely an uncontrolled trailhead, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a continual problem area.
I was looking to see if Captain Jacobs was still on because.
Yeah, she's gone.
Yeah, they also, they also parked the sheriff's decoy car down there too, which was really helpful.
And I've had a morning, well, exchange with, with Captain Jacobs about, about the area up there. And they were going to kind of increase presence, but it's just that, you know, there's only so much they can do.
Yeah.
But no parking restrictions, I think, are probably the key to doing it. Certainly has helped at.
Pinecrest.
Pinecrest.
Yeah.
I just want to bring everyone's attention to, as we try to usually rein it in at two hours, keep everyone's attention span, especially for people for record. And we're running over two hours right now. I just want to make sure that we're aware of that.
I believe we adjourned.
We can, I want to, does anybody, does anybody, do you have any more comments? We got, the trails is a big one. One of the things that we have to remember when it comes to the trails and the parks is I liken it to, to people with D U R. We can do everything we can, there's still be that odd person that decides to drink a bite. What we need to do is be vigilant, we can't stop, basically we can't stop anybody. They, some, there are going to be those people that are going to do it no matter what we do. We just have to be vigilant in the best we can by trying to minimize that as much as possible. So anyway, so I, I, I wasn't trying to end the conversation, I was just trying to say this, maybe round it up a little bit.
I'm happy to share what I've learned and also the signage as it applies or not applies that can be included. But I think consistency is, is important.
And I, and I think this, this affects across many census tracts. So I, I think shared emails between those that have trails in there, anything you get, I think is important, so.
Yeah, at least two. I, I would suggest a, an ad hoc, I won't call it a subcommittee, but just an ad hoc conversation between Victoria, Dorothy and I and anybody else that's kind of looking at the forest interface that we, we talk and, you know, get a unified request to county sheriffs, LA County Fire and Forest Service to figure out where we go with this.
Good, what, what the trails, I mean, you have Eden Canyon in Diane and Sylvia Census Tract. You have the trailheads in your census tract, including, well, you have Cheney Trail and the others in my census tract, 4602. You have the trailheads that end out from Dorothy's section and over to the, to the west. And then you have the trails that go down into the, the JPR, which goes through Veronica Census Tract. So there's at least one, two, three, four, five census tracts I can think of that are impacted by trail issues. So, yes, I agree, we should have a conversation, but I think we're going to make, make sure that we include all the census tracts that have trails associated with it.
Forty-six twelve.
Forty-six twelve?
Even Canyon seems like it's pretty well locked down already. It's really, as you go up, that it's, it's not. But I, I, I'm not going to argue the point here. Yes, I, I would like to see a consistent response and request to county, Forest Service. And, you know, if we're going to do it, we need to do it across the, the entire interface and not leave gaps that are, are prone to be exploited and overused.
All right, does everybody hear that? So basically, let's all get, let's all get involved.
Yeah, happy to share everything, yes.
Because for time-wise, I want to try to, I, I want to, I want to bring up one point because I, I did get a text during this discussion and I want to round up with that only because it wasn't made clear, I don't think, during the meeting. Councilmember Jones brought up the election and the, the, from, report from the election committee. It's, we've had council members that have questioned about if their term ends and they want to leave and during this crisis, how can they do so? So I know the, the election chair was trying to, a, a month with the executive committee on ways that people could leave. If you, if you don't wish to leave, you know, you can work an interim, but if you're undecided, we can't ask you to leave either. So this was a way to try and help people that, that maybe their term's up and they have other things to do right now during this crisis and wasn't going to intend to stay. So there's no, just want to make it clear, there's no misunderstanding. That's who this was intended for. If you wish to stay on or you are undecided, no one is going to be, you, you know, we are in need for people in the interim, so. I just want to make that clear because I don't think that was, came up in the report is what, what, what you would do if you were an undecided person.
Not how I understood it. I understood it to be that if you were going to leave, that you were free to go and not that you would wait till to decide later on. I didn't get that. I mean, and I didn't have that written down, but if that's the way it is, then it's clear now. I was under the impression that at the end of June, those that were going to leave, were going to leave. And it would be those that were left were the ones that were going to run for reelection. That's the way I understood.
So stay, stay, staying, okay, as the chair of the education, the election committee. So basically, basically going from the original term limit. So if you, if that, you make the decision by the end of your term.
Say if they, if they want, hey, fine, that's fine until the election. But I think the one thing it does is we, we end up in a position, we don't know how many are going to run. We don't know other people who want to apply are up in the air. At least if people didn't want to run and someone in that census tract wanted to run, at the end of June, they could start preparing themselves to, to get ready for whenever the election is.
But typically, you don't, I mean, people can make their decision at the very end. So when you actually apply for an election, you don't, you don't know who's running.
Very.
But you, but, but, but knowing by the end of a term limit is, is a fair comment.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I know that it has been customary for the election committee. I know that it has been customary for the election committee to ask council members that are not going to be seeking additional terms to let them know so that it's open early. I have not taken a additional term, it's been over a year that that decision was made. And I also believe that it will be good, even if someone is not seeking additional term, to wait until there is an election where they then officially give up. But I also understand the election committee dilemma, whether to hold somebody just because they have not been officially relieved of their responsibility and creating a vacuum in that process. I'm not sure that that's the best thing to do. But again, the flexibility of saying if a council member who will not be seeking a second term or additional term is free to go, again, that that is, that is a decision of the executive committee or the election committee. I do believe that rather than leave a vacuum is to encourage them to hold on, you know, nobody, we did not create this, it was an emergency situation that was created as a result of the COVID nineteen. So that would be my recommendation to appeal to those individuals, if they could, to stay. You know, I know that I am not seeking a additional term, and I, if you, unless if you all sell courage, you can go, that's fine, but I could stay until the afternoon.
The issue is here, typically, the, the committee, the, the election committee would make the decision on what happens for the election, and then it's voted in by the council. The problem is, we didn't have a chance to vote.
That's how it should be.
Right. Can we take this offline, please?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. We're running all the time now, so we don't have as long to do a discussion as we'd hoped for, but are we all okay with ending the meeting right now at two hours and seventeen, two hours and twelve minutes?
Motion's on the table.
All right, all right, we'll share. The motion, the motion that was on the table died for lack of a second.
In that, in that case, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Thanks, Diane. Okay.
All right.
Again, and thank you, and again, thank you to the library, this was awesome. I really appreciate it.